For the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and there are no items that contain any exempt information. As we do with all council meetings, it's important that I say that the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We've received two petitions and questions from six citizens of the city. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, then we're to take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square. And I am very quickly going to ask that each committee member in turn introduces themselves and I'll start on my left, which will be John.
Hi, I'm John Wright, councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hi, I'm Craig Humblehew, councillor for East Ecksfield Ward.
And councillor Ruth Mercero, councillor for City Ward.
Councillor Ian Holm, councillor for Baiton.
Councillor Andrew Sanger, councillor for Ford Ward and group spokesperson on this committee.
Councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beechfield and Greenhill Ward.
Thank you, Richard, and I'm councillor Ben Miskill and I'm chair of this committee. I am going to ask for any apologies for absence from the committee. We've received notification from councillor Janet Riddler and councillor Alexi Diamond that unfortunately they, due to illness, are not going to be able to take part in our meeting today. I don't think we've received any other apologies for absence.
No, Chair.
And thank you. That therefore takes us on to item two, which is a standing item on our agendas and this is to make a decision about whether we need to exclude the public or press for any particular matter. The meeting today, of course, is open to the public and there are no items on the agenda containing exempt information. Item three is an opportunity to ask members of the committee to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda. And of course, if we do, then can I please ask you to refer to that item of business and state whether it is a pecuniary or personal interest and then to outline the reason for the declaration? Can I see whether anyone, any member of the committee wishes to make a declaration? I don't see any member of the committee who wishes to make a declaration of interest. So therefore we'll move on to item four, which is an opportunity to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting of this committee, which were held some time ago, or it seems some time ago, on the 12th of June of this year. Can I see whether members are content with agreeing those minutes as a true and accurate record of the meeting that was held on the 12th of June? I can see some nods from colleagues, so therefore no dissent, so therefore we will pass the minutes as a true and accurate record and probably have to sign them as well. And we shall do that one later, superb. Item five is a really important part of all of our council meetings. We have received two petitions and six sets of public questions for today's meeting. Now, there is a maximum time allowed, thirty minutes for this particular item. And we are going to hear firstly from one set of petitioners relating to Castle Croft. And I understand that we've got Jane Hilton, Ivan Spikings, apologies if I have mispronounced your name, I think Sarah Lindsay as well. If you can come towards the microphone and in order to be able to speak, if you just press the button in front of you. Also, thank you very much as well for the information that you supplied to committee members yesterday, which was really, really thorough and really appreciated. And also the copy of the petition that you provided today, which is really useful as well. I'll hand over to you.
Thank you, thank you for hearing from us today. So I'm here to represent the residents of Castle Croft Drive, following our petition for residence-only parking. Effectively, we live on a fairly new estate off Granville Road with eighty-four houses on it and it is a public car park, Monday to Friday during the week. We've been raising our concerns about this with councillors for over eight years now and most recently Anne Murphy, before she sadly passed away, was our voice. During this time, we were asked to be patient, that plans were in place for us, but to wait for the much bigger and comprehensive parking approach of the Park Hill scheme, which of course was voted by this committee not to go ahead last year. So during term time, our estate fills up with non-residence vehicles. It starts with commuters who want to use our estate for parking to go to the station and work in the city. And then as soon as college opens, we have between forty to sixty extra vehicles entering our estate just to park. We then have the added pinch points at school pickup and drop-off time when All Saints College is open, sorry, All Saints School. And we have parents of children then parking on the double yellow lines at the entrance to the estate, blocking our exit safely. During these times, we are unable to safely navigate our way around the estate. Our pavements are blocked, the road itself has double parking on it, which means that our service vehicles and emergency vehicles are unable to easily navigate. And I've included further details in that in the submission. When Sheffield United are playing, we also have the same issues with football traffic. And the irony is not lost on us that Sheffield College at that point opened their own car park at a charge of five pounds per car for anybody who wants to park there for the football match. This is not, it would appear, what was envisaged at the planning stage of our estate. When we look at the documents, and I am by no means an expert on this, nor do I particularly want to be, but it looks as though there were twenty-four bespoke parking spaces allocated for visitors on the estate. It was also, in terms of a safety assessment, calculated that there will be less than thirty vehicles a day exiting the estate onto the main Granville Road and this was not thought to be a safety issue. And I can say from my own experience that thirty vehicles exiting our estate can happen within fifteen minutes on a regular basis, day in, day out, all day. Part of that planning as well required every dwelling to have a off-road parking space of one, or for the larger houses, two parking spaces because of the recognised parking pressures on such a small estate. At the moment, we have absolutely no signage on the estate, so it's a thirty mile an hour speed limit, my understanding is. We also have two hairpin blind bends on the estate, of which there are no double yellow lines and cars are regularly parked, both blocking access and also on the pavements round those hairpin bends. Now, myself and none of my other residents and friends and neighbours moved to Sheffield or onto Castle Croft Drive to become car park attendants, traffic enforcement officers, or to spend all our time on the phone to Sheffield Police because we are unable to get out of our driveways. So please, my appeal is, on behalf of the residents of Castle Croft Drive, look at the original plans, look at the safety discussions and give us our safety and quality of life back. Thank you. Is it possible?
Of course, if you'd like to make an additional contribution, that's absolutely fine. Thank you.
The only additional contribution that I'd like to make is that Jane has spoken very eloquently about our thoughts, feelings, but to revisit the information about planning and what was intended for Castle Croft Drive. We've gone so far as to look at the Manual for Streets and we've looked at section eight for parking guidance and it's so clear that what's happening in our road just doesn't meet the intentions of the way in which a residential area should be laid out and used. We would really like those twenty-four places to be defined. We'd like clarification about whether they are for the use of visitors to our estate. And you have briefly mentioned, Ben, that you are perhaps considering a zero-cost solution to that. We think that on our behalf, we would like you to go back to the developer and say, these were the criteria relating to management of traffic and parking on this development. It doesn't appear to have been fulfilled. Very recently, for purely aesthetic reasons, the developer through enforcement was made to plant a few trees on the bank by the pathway. That was perhaps a couple of years ago. And if enforcement has been successful in what was originally planned there, please go for the parking enforcement and really help eighty-four households as your constituents.
Well, thank you very much, Sarah, and thank you very much, Jane, as well, and also for the contribution, Ivan, that I think you and other residents have made to this. It is very good that you supplied the names, the addresses of all those people who have signed your petition and it quite clearly shows, doesn't it, that there's a great deal of public support and concern in your area. I think it's really interesting, isn't it, the information that you supported and that you provided to us yesterday as well, that does shows the strength of feeling and the and some of the practical issues that problem parking is causing. You know, I know personally, I'm a ward councillor in Park and Arbutham, which is just starts across your road really, even though you are in Manor Castle Ward. And I know that issues around parking, particularly with Sheffield College, does cause issues for many residents in my ward as well. I think it's interesting, particularly with the contribution I think we'll hear later from Mr Drayton, who will also raise issues about his streets or around his streets and particularly about developers and the adoption of roads, that there's quite a lot of work that needs to be done in that particular area in terms of how we manage our relationship with developers before the adoption of roads into our network. So thank you very much for coming to the committee today and supplying all that information. And just to provide clarity, and I know that you know much of this because you have the lived experience of it, we know that residents in the Park Hill area of the city were consulted on a parking permit scheme and that was some time ago, before many members of this committee were in post and that was back in March twenty twenty-two. I do remember speaking to many members of the public around that time. Now, you mentioned it in your contribution, we had about one thousand and eighty-eight responses to that consultation and the council received nine hundred and five objections to the plans, which albeit were for a much wider scheme than you're calling for today. And some residents of Castle Croft did object. However, I'm seeing that there's widespread support amongst the streets around your area for additional measures. Sheffield City Council at the time also received a petition with two thousand one hundred and forty-five signatures against that wider scheme. Many of the objections received commented that the proposed project was too large. A new proposal with a smaller boundary, which would include Castle Croft Drive, was presented to this committee on June the fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. And as you might recall, the committee voted at the time against that proposal back then. And as part of this, we did state that the parking scheme would not be revisited in the future. However, you've raised a number of issues about dangerous parking in the supporting information that you kindly provided last night and the committee would like to thank you for that. We as a committee are very committed and have adopted Vision Zero, which is a commitment to eliminate all fatalities and serious injuries on Sheffield's roads. So therefore we take this matter very seriously and that's why many members of this committee were dismayed to see that South Yorkshire Police cancelled Operation Park Safe, which allowed residents to take photos of dangerous parking with a view to police carrying forward prosecutions. Now, the council does have jurisdiction over aspects of parking in the city and therefore, considering your question and particularly some of the dangerous parking that you've supplied, some picture evidence for, I'm going to commit to write to the Chair of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee to request that appropriate enforcement action is taken because there are some examples of very dangerous parking, which is a barrier to us achieving Vision Zero across our city to eliminate all serious injuries and fatalities on our roads. In terms of the way forward for your petition, I've spoken to your ward councillors and also to political leaders across this committee. And we've agreed to ask officers to investigate whether a limited parking scheme covering Castle Croft Drive could be delivered and if so, how this could be achieved at no cost to the council, given the financial pressures that we as a city face. And we'll ask that this assessment be made and we will write to you in due course. I think it's important to thank you for coming to the committee today. You brought forward a large amount of evidence that has certainly refreshed our understanding of the issues that you are facing. It was very useful that you provided the photos yesterday of the particular problem parking as well. And we'd like to continue in a spirit of dialogue and there's quite clearly an awful lot of support for some intervention in Castle Croft Drive. And so we would like to work together to see what can be done within the limits of financial resources that we have. Thank you. Our next petition comes from, it is entitled, the Oscar Thorpe Drive and Fervell Gardens Residents Petition for Traffic Calming. It was a paper petition and it had thirty-one signatures. It is organised, I understand, by Mr Barnard, but I believe that Mr Drayton is going to come forward and introduce it to us and it's lovely to see you, Mr Drayton. And also, I think, Ingrid as well.
Good morning, Chair. Thanks very much, Chair. My name's Ian Drayton, live on Oscar Thorpe Drive and this is...
Ingrid Gilson.
Who lives just a bit further down the road. We hear about a new housing development at the back end of Oscar Thorpe Drive, which has been excellent development. It's social housing, it's been designed so the streets can be reclaimed by the kids, there's no curbs and it's really an excellent development. It's a very mixed community there. When we went down last night to take some photographs, which I've supplied with a pack to the Chair, there were kids playing out in the street. Before the development was done, there was an old folks home there and there was a speed bump that was actually on the private land that the local authority is now going to be adopting. In relation to our requests for the speed bump to be renewed, we've been informed that because it was on private land, it's not going to be renewed. So what we're concerned about is there's going to be more traffic down there, there's significantly increased number of children on the road now, playing in that, playing in the streets, which is why I think kids should be allowed to play. There's a blind corner when you come round to that estate and that's not been taken into account. So one of the things we were wondering was, has any traffic calming risk assessment been carried out that's led you to the conclusion that you don't need the speed bump to be replaced? And it's my understanding when the original speed bump was put in, that was a result of direct action by the residents that lived down there and the old social housing landlord did install the speed bump. But in all the comments that we've received back from the local authority, they haven't addressed the issue about any assessments for traffic calming in that estate. And I think, I think there's one, there's this guidance note here, Department of Transport, Local Transport, Note 107. And really looking through that, it appears that the council hasn't actually used that guidance as a way of informing their risk assessment, if indeed a risk assessment has been carried out. So I think our core question is, is has a traffic calming risk assessment been carried out and what are the conclusions? Or has it just not been considered at all?
Thank you for bringing your petition today and the contribution that you make in your community and also the information that you supplied to members of this committee ahead of the meeting. As you know already, part of the planning process when this new development was constructed was to make all of the private roads to the new development adoptable and therefore to bring it up to the highway standard. As I understand it, there are still some minor snagging issues and no doubt you'll probably suggest that these issues are much more than simply minor snagging issues. They're outstanding with the developer and the road hasn't yet been adopted and it's quite an interesting issue that is a common thread in different parts of the city with developers who've not yet made their roads in the development up to the standard in order for the city council to be able to adopt them. And I know from speaking to other elected members in other wards that this is a matter of considerable frustration. I am going to ask officers to look into this further. As I know that, of course, this is an issue that faces many different parts of the city and leads to understandable frustration, so please do let me get back to you with regards to that. With regard to traffic calming measures that you mentioned, I've asked officers to look back over documents and I'm told that there's nothing within the planning conditions to this particular development that required any traffic calming measures to be introduced. And therefore, as a result, there are no plans to introduce additional measures at this particular location. For roads that are already part of the highway network, and I appreciate that Oscar Thorpe Drive continues to be an unadopted road, an established process for dealing with such requests and scoring them according to a set of criteria is used. And that is the assessment process that I think you allude to. That's to ensure that the limited funding that's available is used in a really appropriate manner in order to be able to target interventions that require the most urgent attention, allow us therefore to achieve Vision Zero, which is to eliminate all fatalities and injuries on our roads. Officers have suggested that you might wish to speak alongside your neighbours to the developer Great Places to see if they would have an interest in funding traffic calming measures here. These would have to, of course, be installed to highway standards and would then be integrated into our highway network once the road is adopted. Although having spoken to many colleagues in this room, I know that speaking with private sector housing developers on such matters can be extremely frustrating. However, I'm happy to work with you and your councillors to see what additional support can be provided to you in making that case to Great Places. And I'd really like to thank you for highlighting this issue of considerable concern to you, but also of interest to the committee as well, because it is important for us to be able to deliver Vision Zero across the city. And thank you very much for bringing this petition to us today. Thank you. We have received six sets of public questions for today's meeting. I'll just turn to Rachel for a quick summary.
Thank you, Chair. So the six members of the public unfortunately aren't able to attend today, so they will receive written responses. However, just to summarise what those questions were, we had a question from Stephen Clark regarding cycling on pavements in pedestrianised areas and what action could be taken. There was a question from Amy Ashton that was regarding traffic growth and the impact on Meadowhead Roundabout, the A61 bus corridor and wood seats. Question from Sam Wakeling, this was regarding safety on streets, particularly around the Park Hill junction and the rollout of school streets and the safety around schools as well. Some questions from David Cronshaw that related to the Clean Air Zone and the impact that it's had on pollution levels and the income from the fines regarding that. Graham Rowe, on behalf of the Safe Streets Now Group in the Manor Castle Ward, had also submitted some questions regarding safer streets and that was again particularly related to the Park Hill junction. And then finally, we've had a question from Dr Mike Smith and Lindsay McCullin that relates to the twenty mile an hour strategy. Thank you.
Thank you for the summary, Rachel. And I think that the fact that we've had six questions from members of the public who were unfortunately unable to attend today makes the case about why we need to reform how we deal with public questions at committee meetings. And from September onwards, I understand that we'll be more flexibility for members of the public to be able to make contributions at these committees because we know that it is not always accessible, particularly for those members of the public with childcare responsibilities, with working commitments in the day as well. And we want to be making sure that members of the public can ask questions and get answers as well in a way that works for them. I do see that councillor Mercero wished to speak.
Could I request that all members of the committee get answers that are sent to the members of the public for this meeting and all future meetings, please?
Of course, I'll just turn to Rachel for some clarification about the process question there.
Yeah, thank you. So all the responses and the full details of the questions will be published on the council's website and I'll also email those round to all members when they're finalised as well.
Thank you. That therefore takes us on to item seven of our agenda, which is the, if I'd known, apologies, I've made a mistake, actually it's item six of the agenda, which is actually member questions. Now, there's a maximum time of ten minutes for this whole item of business. However, we've received two questions, as I understand it, from councillor Mercero. And I believe that these have been sent to members of the committee. Apologies, I think members of the committee may only have had sight of them relatively recently. Unfortunately, these things often take some time to be able to draw together answers and in an ideal situation, we'd be able to provide you with them much earlier. So I'll just go through the questions that we've got. So we have question one and question two that are there. Written answers from myself as the Chair of the committee to questions submitted by members in advance of the meeting have, of course, been emailed. The item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who have submitted those questions to ask one supplementary question for each question asked. So councillor Mercero is entitled to ask a supplementary question on any of those two questions that she submitted. Councillor Mercero.
I'm going to take time to reflect on the answers that you've given. I might come back with further answers in the next committee, but for today, I don't have further questions to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mercero. That therefore takes us to item seven, which is the work programme and considering whether we should approve the work programme. And Rachel is going to take us through it.
Thank you, Chair. And so the committee's work programme contains all known substantive agenda items for forthcoming meetings. On page seventeen, there's a table which sets out the proposed additions and amendments since the last meeting of the committee. And then from page eighteen, you can see each committee date and the agenda items that are proposed for those. Also to note is that we've received a request for an additional meeting in November. This is due to the volume of reports that are due around October and December to enable the committee to sort of manage the business in those meetings. A date will be confirmed shortly for that and communicated to all members. And I'll hand over to officers if you've got any specific questions on agenda items. Thank you.
Colleagues, do I see anyone who wishes to make a contribution or to ask a question? I can see three colleagues. Councillor Shaw first.
Thank you, Chair. So the additional meeting in November is welcome because I know that there's fourteen items that are already awaiting a date and there's twenty proposed additions. And this committee, for anyone who's not familiar with the work of TRC, has a very, very large remit. There's almost nothing that it doesn't cover and we always struggle to get through all the work items in a particular year. Last meeting in June, I asked about additional meeting in April twenty twenty-five, since we're not expecting any local elections. And Chair, you agreed to take it with officers and find out if that would be possible. Do you have any update on that, please?
Thank you, councillor Shaw. I think after we had our committee meeting, we did have a cross-party meeting where we were discussing the work programme. And I think at that meeting, we didn't decide to add an additional meeting, which would be in April of twenty twenty-five. However, I think that should be a live matter that we consider as a committee because quite clearly, as you've highlighted, many of the meetings that we've got are extremely weighty and it may well be that the business of this committee has to be conducted into April of next year. So I would anticipate that perhaps we do have to add a meeting in April. And if we do, therefore, it would be good if that was reflected in the work programme. And if we do, therefore, it would be good if that was reflected in the work programme. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you. I was going to suggest, do we even need to perhaps have an extra one in January, considering how much is on the agenda? I mean, later in the agenda, in the Year Ahead document, it mentions talking about the tram vision, and the tram vision is one of those items that hasn't yet got a date. So it's very ambitious to be talking about what we're going to be doing this year, while we've not actually found a gap, you know, a space for it yet. And I would like to, I mean, perhaps it's coming into in the November meeting, but is that when we're expecting the local plan to come back to this committee?
So I think all of those items that you raised are really important ones to make. What I would say is that it's important that we flag any concerns that we do have at this meeting, but I think also because it's quite technical in detail and we need to have significantly more discussions about items of business and how they are timetabled, that probably the appropriate setting is that cross-party meeting that we have at regular intervals, and I think we committed to have one over the next few months in order to be able to review the work programme. We did do that a good few weeks ago now, and I think we are aiming to do that over the coming months as well. I can see that Will is also nodding his head. So I think that this is a live document, a working document, and we do have to be mindful of the comments that you've made about making sure that we do add additional meetings if necessary. So hopefully you can feed those to your group spokesperson, and we can bring those to that work planning meeting. Councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. And, you know, I do think progress is being made on the work plan, but, you know, we're two years in, it's a very challenging remit. And I notice the mix of very strategic items coming up, as well as items that are very much for information rather than for decision, but I still welcome those in terms of regeneration schemes that are midway. I think it's important to get those updates. I was just concerned on page 22, just that how many items we've yet to put a date to. And it goes back to the point that councillor Shaw made in terms of, we have two and a half hours, you know, every six weeks for these meetings or whatever, and we still seem to have too many items. And I think there's so much good, there's so many really important papers coming to this committee over the next year. I just would hope that we, in the next few weeks, we can get dates for many of these. And I would also repeat my point that in amongst all the strategic papers, we do have ones which are of much more interest to local councillors than in terms of citywide strategy. And I still don't think we've quite got the remit correct, but I accept we are where we are. But it would just help to know, you know, when we come back, say in September, whether as many of these items we could put a date to, and then I think we could have a closer idea in terms of answering councillor Shaw's question about what extra meetings to put in, because I don't want to see any items lost in terms of the year ahead. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sanger, for your reflections. I'll just take councillor Merzouf as well and seek to bring all this together.
Thank you. I wonder if it's feasible to continue receiving written reports, but to replace reports where decisions aren't required with public briefings, because that could help to condense the number of items on the agenda. I have a question as well about renewable energy scoping, which is on page 20. Given that this is the first bullet point on the Year Ahead Plan, renewable energy scoping study to begin delivery on council owned buildings, why is there a question on whether it needs to come to the committee in October?
Thank you, councillor Merzouf. So firstly, addressing the points that I think councillor Sanger made, I think he was drawing our attention to items which the committee have agreed to add to the agenda but have not yet had a date that has been set. So that's page 22 of your agenda pack. As I understand it, this is not necessarily as a result of not having time in a busy committee planning cycle for each particular meetings, but it is simply a reflection that we don't necessarily know when that decision point will be needed, and officers are currently working up those proposals. So for example, we have an item there which is about a city shared bike hire scheme. I know that that is an issue that's very close to the hearts of many members of this committee. That's at early stages. We do have an ambition to be able to deliver a city shared bike hire scheme, but we don't yet know, because more detailed work is needed in order to be able to know when the decision point will be. So it's important this is on our forward plan, but we are not in a position to know where that is going to fall in our meeting cycle. Clearly, we may need to later take a look back and see whether we need to add those additional meetings, which is a point that councillor Shaw makes, when we've got a more complete idea of when these decision points are needed for particular items. I think there was a particular issue that councillor Merzouf was reflecting on, and, Will, apologies for putting you on the spot with this, but I think councillor Merzouf made an important point about the development of our particular work in this area. Is there anything that you can help add to that?
Yeah, happy to do that, Chair. I think there are two things to say here. I think the first one, councillor Merzouf, might be related to some money that members agreed could be allocated to a local renewable strategy, 3.5 million pounds. So I think the idea of this report is to update on progress against that 3.5 million, and just to say exactly the nature of the projects that have already been committed to, and what the plans are for the remaining funds. So I think that's the purpose of this particular report. I think the second piece is around our local area energy plan, which is going into commission very shortly, and that will identify a whole range of local renewable projects, along with some broader strategic energy outcomes. I think, Chair, on that one, we'd like to run a knowledge briefing with members when we go into commission and just run members through the process of developing that particular document. So again, I acknowledge the challenge that lots of members have made around the scale and breadth of the work that comes through this committee. I would certainly support reviewing whether we do have those additional meetings. I think we're probably going to have to have them to get through the business, but obviously that will be for members to decide as well.
So thank you, Will, as well for clarifying. That was the particular issue about renewable energy scoping study on page 20, but also the advanced zoning pilot for heat networks that was also mentioned there. I think also there was a reflection from councillor Merzouf about whether we can do the business of this committee slightly differently. So for example, when there's a report that comes forward that doesn't have a decision point, but is simply for noting, can we be more creative in how we draw the public's attention to it? And I think you mentioned whether we could have a public briefing. That's certainly something that I think that we can take away from this meeting and reflect on more. But fundamentally, at the end of this meeting, I know that members of this committee are meeting together to talk about committee remits as well. And I know that you'll also have your reflections on how we can deliver the council plan in perhaps a more cohesive way through how we organise our committees as well, and perhaps some of those discussions might be best reflected outside this meeting at that particular opportunity as well. Okay, so that therefore takes us to considering the work programme, which is on page 15 of the agenda pack. Members understandably have raised a number of comments or questions of clarification. We'll continue to reflect on those, because this is a working document. But I'll ask committee whether they are content with approving this as a working document that we'll continue to review. I can see that some members are nodding, and there's no dissent. So therefore, the work programme has been passed. So that takes us on to item eight, which is the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee year ahead. Now, before I hand over to Will to take us through this report, I think it's probably just important just to set the scene. It was delayed, committee members will remember, because of the pre-election period. And I do want to thank committee members and officers for the work that got us up to this point. As we've mentioned in our previous item, we had a very productive cross-party forward planning session about the work programme, and I do hope that those meetings can continue as we progress throughout the year to deal with many of the issues that have quite rightly been flagged up for us. Now, the report that Will is going to run us through is on page 32 of your report pack, and it takes us through how the committee plans to deliver both on the council plan but also on the city goals. And we've got a very busy few months ahead, delivering on city sustainability goals, pushing forward with the advanced zoning pilots the councillor Merzouf alluded to, to providing safe and secure energy to heat homes and commercial properties in the city, driving forward with our local area energy plan, which is going to be coming before this committee by the end of the year. We're also delivering on our clean air strategy and creating an investment pipeline to help support rapid decarbonisation in the city. Our committee is also going to be overseeing the local plan, which is currently with inspectors at the moment, and with those hearings set to continue up to October of this year. And I know that councillor Shaw has already made a contribution today about the local plan and wanting to ensure that there continues to be updates and oversight of that particular process. We've also got much work to do to continue the good work the committee has set in the transport vision, including a very exciting piece of work about a city centre access and movement strategy, as well as a new active travel infrastructure plan. And in terms of regeneration, we're working at pace, of course, to transform the city. People will see outside of this room that we are completing Heart of the City, and when we go down to West Bar, we'll know that we've got to ensure that phase one of that development is completed as well. And we're also transforming those catalyst sites at Moorfoot, Furnace Hill and Neepsend, as well as the station with Homes England and working with that particular government agency. So we've got an exciting year ahead, and with that, I'll add over to Will to add any additional points that are needed before I'm going up to members for questions and contributions. Will.
Thanks very much, Chair. I think you've probably done most of my job for me there, but thanks very much. I just wanted to set out a bit of background to this report. This report obviously comes on the back of, as the Chair's outlined, the adoption of Sheffield City Goals, which is a really important piece of work to set the long-term direction of Sheffield, hearing from residents in the city about their aspirations. But also with the recently adopted council plan, there is now a really, really clear framework of objectives that the council has adopted. And obviously, that will set out the key priorities for this committee over the coming years. So this report really reflects our role in delivering against some of those council plan objectives. I think it's really important to acknowledge, as you've said, Chair, that this work plan and, you know, the work of this committee is, you know, contributing hugely to some of those council plan objectives. And in fact, you know, given the range of projects, initiatives, policy development measures in TRC, we are going to play, this committee is going to play a really quite fundamental role in shaping the outcomes against that plan. So you've mentioned some of the key priorities for this year, and as you've said, I think what we need, what we've agreed to do is regularly review the work that comes through this committee in the form of cross-party working group and planning meetings that we will do alongside the regular knowledge briefings that we do and also alongside committee business. So just running through some of the highlights, then, you've mentioned the adoption of the council transport vision. We've talked about some of the heart of the city work that we're doing, and of course, these projects all sit within the three key newly defined council plan themes of people, prosperity and planet. So we are all working against those three key pillars for our city. One of the things that I did want to mention was, you've mentioned Heart of the City too. You've also mentioned some of our housing growth aspirations, and this committee will hear about how we're getting on with our major catalyst sites for the city, their Furnace Hill and Neepsend. There are also Moorfoot, where we're in discussions with Homes England about a delivery strategy for the exciting work there, and also around the station master plan campus, where again Homes England are involved, and we're looking at how we might bring forward a new gateway for the city. So all of that work to come. We'll also be talking about the city's response to the climate emergency through flood protection, and there'll be some work coming before the committee on how we adapt to new sustainable urban drainage technologies, how we legislate for some of the changes that we need to make in terms of our planning system, and how we work with the development community to protect our new developments against incidents of extreme weather events. Other things that will be coming before the committee are our response to biodiversity net gain, and obviously the increasing prominence of biodiversity within the planning system. We'll be talking about the ITA levy and how we contribute to our regional transport objectives. Colleagues will know that Simca are going through at the moment an update to their local transport plan, and it's our responsibility to respond to the regional plan and make sure that we are, you know, some of those key objectives within that plan are seen locally, and that's what our transport vision has done. Transport vision will provide a framework for a number of different projects which will come before this committee as well. You mentioned energy generation and decarbonisation, so I've already talked about the local area energy plan, which will be going into commission this year, which is really quite an exciting document that will set out a whole range of projects that we're going to be proposing that will deal with how we become more resilient as a city and looking at some of our challenges around energy storage and upgrading grid capacity. You've mentioned the Clean Air Strategy and the next round of projects that we intend to deliver against the Clean Air Investment Plan. We've already committed, as members know, some one million pounds towards safer streets and local initiatives, and we'll be coming back before committee with some ideas about what we do for the next round of projects. And we'll also be talking about some of the ways that we're working with national bodies like UK Infrastructure Bank and like the Cities Commission for Climate Change on driving institutional investment into some of those decarbonisation strategies for the city. So that's another key area of focus for transport regen and climate. Just finally, I think it's important to note that we are obviously working in an environment where we've got a new investment zone for the city, and actually, some of the plans for some early projects under the investment zone will be coming back before this committee, just so that members can get an idea of some of the proposals that are being developed in partnership with Simca to make sure that we're supporting sustainable growth in that corridor, and also looking at initiatives like the Innovation Spine, which is a collaborative proposal, working with our university partners and with Simca to look at how we support startups and scale-ups in the city to stay in the city and retain that graduate talent and build on some of the expertise, world renowned expertise that is coming out of our university community. So all of that exciting work to come this year and also next year, of course. We won't have local elections next year, so that will give us an opportunity to use the time that we would be spending in pre-election period to get through committee business. But I'll probably leave it there, Chair, and, you know, happy to take any questions on any of that.
Thank you, Will, for taking us through that report. Do I see any member wishes to make contribution or to ask a question? I can see councillor Merzouf.
Yeah, I'd like to note that according to EU scientists, Sunday was the world's hottest day ever recorded, so we really need to keep all options on the table. I'd also argue that we need to go a lot further than only having a 65% reduction in transport emissions for our city. And I have a question. What impact will the potential reopening of Sheffield Doncaster Airport have on our ambitions of meeting net zero?
I'll quickly turn to councillor Horner and then councillor Sanger, and we can come back with some answers. Apologies, it may well not have been councillor Sanger, was it councillor Shaw? It was, it was, it was both. Okay, thank you. Councillor Horner.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things about having visions is about carrying people with us. This morning, yet again, I had to work out how to get from the Cathedral tram stop to here, because we have a massive project which we keep. here, because we have a massive project which we keep rehearing is going over budget, and the public, I think, is losing its patience with it. We have a, I'm not suggesting it's not a great vision, but we have to explain to the public why projects like this get so stuck, because it really is annoying the public, because every time you come to this, this area, you have to work out what the new route is to get anywhere. And even this morning, they were moving barriers yet again. So that's just an observation in that particular respect. Let's talk about a gateway for the station. And the other serious point about Sheffield Midland Station is it's got severe capacity constraints. I mean, a large amount of money was spent by Network Rail and the new platform in Ador, but there are no extra services because the trains can't get into either Sheffield or indeed to Manchester. Now, we don't have control of Manchester, and I'm aware that Mayor Manchester has created all sorts of proposals to improve access there. But if we're not going to deal with the issue of Sheffield Midland's capacity problems, which I think can only be solved by reopening Sheffield Victoria to take services away from Midland and knock on from that, I think those are serious things that we actually need to look at fairly soon. It's all well and good making nice access to the station, but if we can't get any more trains into it, it's not going anywhere.
Thank you. I'll also just take one additional contribution from councillor Sangha and then get some reflections and come back to councillor Shaw.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Chair, and thank you too, Will, for sort of leading us through this. And I really wanted to pick up that final point, that opportunity of not having local elections next year, in terms of making sure we do use these two years to deliver on some of these strategies. I mean, I think we did a lot of good work in terms of the transport vision. I just want to see that when we get to, you know, March twenty-six, that we, you know, that bus franchising has happened, and that people can see that they've got a better bus service and they've got a real choice in terms of using public transport, and that we, having taken back, you know, having brought Supertram back into public ownership, that we can see, we can, we can, you know, we agree, we agree tram vision, but we, you know, people begin to see a difference in terms of rolling stock and see that, see the potential for additional destinations on the tram network. So I'm really looking forward to that, but equally, I'm looking forward to knowing where we're going in terms of clean air. I mean, we've been in breach of regulator, European WHO regulations in terms of air quality for as long as I've been a councillor, so I'm really keen on that and really keen, as councillor Merzaro mentions, to understand that having set a twenty-thirty timetable that we, that we were delivering on our route map. So I think we've got a really important year ahead, but as we've just seen with the work plan, it is going to be a very challenging year. I just think we need to reflect the fact we've got an opportunity with no elections to have a two-year, you know, have a two-year plan, and some of the items in both regeneration and transport and responding to climate change are items which are not about what you can achieve in a day or a week. It is about, it is about making sure that we, you know, that we not only agree strategies, but we, we start to see progress on these. So lots of good work ahead of us, and just wanted to use this opportunity to make real progress over the next two years. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sangha. Before I just turn to Will, it's probably important to clarify because Sean McLean is not here and can't be here with us today as director of Regen. I was on the radio yesterday talking about Fargate. Understandably, people want to know more about Fargate. We know that the public realm works or what people see in front of them will be completed before Christmas of this year, and that the rest of the project that people see there in terms of some of the physical interventions and changes to street level will be completed by the end of February. So we'll be able to see Christmas festivities happening. Also, yesterday, there was an announcement of Thornbridge Brewery making a one million pound investment into the Fargate pub. At the top of Fargate, which shows the strength of investment and business confidence in Fargate, things are improving there, but I think we do need to continue to make the case. I think there was also a point about rail. I think it's probably important I update the committee about meetings that we had yesterday with colleagues in the rail industry. We met with East Midlands Railway to talk about a whole host of issues, but one of the issues that we did mention was our desire to work with Transport for the North on a Sheffield Rail Task Force, which, or Sheffield Rail Group, which would bring together many of our concerns about how we improve our rail network, which councillor Horner has already talked about, how do we make sure at the north end of the station that we increase capacity, how do we draw in those wider discussions about metroisation, so making sure that we can expand our tram network, not just because that makes a good economic case and economic sense for the city and regeneration of the city, but also that it takes local services off the line and introduces additional capacity for long-distance routes. And those discussions, I think, are continuing, particularly with Transport for the North, particularly with government and also with operators as well. I think there were a number of other questions there, weren't there, Will?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think, I think you've, you've covered quite a bit of that. What I would just add on, on the Fargate ongoing works, and obviously, Sean can't be here today, but I know he's, he's in close contact with the contractor there because there have been concerns about barrier layout, getting continuity into the works to make it as efficient as possible and allowing the free, the free flow of pedestrians on Fargate. So there is regular dialogue with the contractor there, and as the chair said, I think that the hope is that, you know, we will start to see the impacts of those works diminish over the next few months. There is also now a working group that's been set up with other members of the council and with South Yorkshire Police, just to look at some of the antisocial behaviour that's going on around Cathedral and around the bottom of Fargate, and making sure that we've got a kind of a targeted one council and one police approach to some of those considerations down there, because I think, you know, unless we work together on some of those issues, you know, efforts are going to be disjointed. I think just to, just to cut to your point on Victoria, I think, you know, it, it's a really good point, and one of the things that we are proposing as part of the expanded tram network is a reopening of Victoria Station, both to take capacity away from Sheffield Midland, but also, as the chair has said, to, to boost our connectivity across the region. One of the things that we have raised with Network Rail and with the train operating companies and with DFT actually, is the capacity constraints that you mentioned to the south of Sheffield Midland and at Manchester. And, you know, it's my understanding that the leaders written to government to outline the fact that we need to maintain our fast routes to Manchester, and that will involve some engineering works at both ends, as you've outlined. So some work on capacity at Sheffield Station and at Manchester. So we need to keep pushing that objective, and that's part of the, that will be part of the discussions points that we, that we raise as, as part of the Sheffield Rail Group as well. I think, is that, is that the answer to all of the questions, or is there anything else?
I think councillor Merzaro also had another point. Would you just be able to clarify that first, councillor Merzaro?
To ask about the impact of the reopening of Sheffield Doncaster Airport on our ambitions of reaching net zero.
Difficult one for me to give an answer on this one, because obviously, Doncaster Sheffield Airport sits outside our remit as a city and some of the work of this committee. I think we've talked in our transport vision about supplying sustainable routes to any reopened airport. I think that's as far as we went in terms of the Sheffield transport vision. But certainly, I think this is probably more of a political question on the reopening of Doncaster Sheffield Airport.
And thank you, Will, and I think it's probably important to clarify, isn't it, that this was an item that was thought before full council and was voted on, and it's quite clear that there is support amongst members for the reopening of Doncaster Sheffield Airport, and I can see that there's some nodding from, from colleagues across the political divide there. We, of course, do want to ensure that Sheffield and South Yorkshire is, is a leader in sustainable aviation and particularly the development of sustainable aviation fuel, which I know that this government is continuing to work with industry to push forward on as well. But people who are hardworking families in this area do want the ability to go on a holiday from a local airport, and, and I think we have to listen to their calls. I will therefore move on to our next set of questions, which is from councillor Shaw, and I think also after that councillor Campbell Pugh. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to highlight point three point three on page thirty-five of the document, regarding alignment with the Mural combined authority. I mean, alignment is, can, can mean a lot, a lot of things. I mean, there have been historic issues of, for example, Active Travel Fund or other schemes in Sheffield being delayed during, in, in delivery or decision-making during, due to going through the, kind of the SimCA process. So my question really is, how are we going to manage the risk of decisions or funding being delayed, or if we're forced to go at the pace of the, of the slowest local authority, or decisions of this committee or the council being overruled, or indeed our agenda being, being set by the regional mayor?
Thank you, councillor Shaw, and councillor Campbell Pugh.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I am conscious as always that we are living through a climate emergency and that our response to that emergency does not always feel that it has the urgency that it warrants. What I am conscious of is that we have an opportunity with a two, with a two-year period where we can operate, and I'm curious to know whether there's any scope for us to look ahead to pieces of work and decisions that may be required of us as elected members that ordinarily might fall into the following municipal year, and whether we could take decisions to potentially bring them forward, particularly, I'm thinking if there are challenging decisions, decisions that may bring about change. Councillor Horner's point about how difficult it is for people to live through change, even on a level of roadworks, when they're not, when they're not, where they don't have the buy-in, on our response to the climate emergency, there, there will and have to be changes and decisions that will not sit easy with the people that we are serving and acting in the best interests of. So it's nice to think that we as politicians will always do the right thing and make brave choices. However, the reality is that that's a very difficult thing to do. So if we can look ahead to where there might be some things that we might fail to push through and go as far as we need to, the closer we come to the next set of elections, and do everything we can to bring them forward so that we've got the best possible chance of making the right choices.
Thank you, councillor Campbell Pugh. So councillor Shaw made, or asked a question particularly about the issue of devolution and the issues that that can bring to the debate. I, I think councillor Campbell Pugh made an important point that all of us probably need to reflect on, which is probably unfair to ask Will for his comment or reflection on, and it was particularly about the opportunities that are presented to us with the fallow year and how we can bring forward plans to deal with the climate emergency. Of course, it's a, it's a political, political matter that we all need to reflect on. I think some of that answer is drawing back to the work programme and particularly those items that are not yet fixed with a date and how we bring forward many of those interventions that we seek to make. So hopefully, we'll be able to add some of those items that don't yet have a date on the work programme and to expedite them. Councillor Campbell Pugh?
Thank you. Sorry, I should have clarified. I meant to preface what I said with the, the fact that there was a political point to what I was making, what I wanted to say. However, there is an officer operational question, which is, can we please look ahead to what pieces of work are likely to fall within that, the year after this one? Do we, are we aware of what they are? Can we, can officers do that piece of work so that we can then take a political decision to bring some forward?
Absolutely. And last, Will fades reflections there, and I think it's, it's a really important point, isn't it? What can we do to plan across the two years that are ahead of us? Will, are you able to, to help answer those points that were raised by councillor Shaw and councillor Campbell Pugh?
Yes, I, I certainly will have a go. I'll take councillor Campbell Pugh's question first, just because, you know, I think, I think it, it's a really good point, actually. How do we use the two years that we have to look at a slightly longer term view? One of the really positive things that members may be aware of is that we've now recruited to a new assistant director for city sustainability, my colleague Nicky Ross. She's been in post about six weeks now, and as part of her coming into the organisation, she is running a review of all of our work streams under the city's sustainability portfolio. And as part of that review, yes, there will be opportunities to look at how we consider decisions at this committee and how we might look at accelerating some of the work streams. So for example, you know, in terms of the outstanding decarbonisation route maps, you know, the aim is to accelerate the delivery of those, slim the documents down so that they're very, very action-based and that they provide a framework for action across the city. So I can certainly take that away, Chair, and look and work with Nicky on, on work that we can do over the next two years, particularly those work streams that might be running quite close to the elections in twenty-six and see if we can bring them forward. So I'll take that as, away as an action. Just to come to councillor Shaw's point around working with SimCA, members will be aware that, you know, the bulk of our money around transport programmes comes through SimCA channels, through devolution. One of the things that we are committed to do, and this has been agreed, you know, by, by the mayor and also by the chief executive of SimCA, is that we're going to work much more closely on some of the project and programme building exercises. So in fact, on Thursday of this week, we're sitting in a workshop, an officer workshop with SimCA colleagues to talk about how we accelerate some of those processes. I do, I do acknowledge councillor Shaw's point that, you know, some necessary work around how the money flows means that, you know, there are quite a lot of processes, there's quite a lot of programming around how that money is spent, and actually, I've been working closely with Tom and others to look at how we might streamline our working arrangements with SimCA to make sure that the money flows quicker and that we get spades in the ground on projects more promptly. That's an ongoing piece of work, that's something that we'll continue to do, and I think it's really important that we do that, particularly given the next round of devolution that we are expecting and similar amounts of money being devolved to the Mural Combined Authority, which will then be drawn down by this authority for transport projects. So it's really important that we get that process of working collaboratively with SimCA on transport and other projects as seamless as possible, and I can give members assurance that that's an ongoing work stream, something that will continue to improve. And actually, I think the answer is us probably working more closely together with senior officers within SimCA at an earlier stage so that we understand objectives. The final thing I'll say is, it's really important, I think, in transport policy to have that thread. So transport policy is set at a national level, then there's a regional plan, then there's a local plan, our own transport vision, and then there are projects on the ground. And in order that we show a continuity of a policy and strategy through those tiers of government, it's important that we are aligned through policy and that we're aligned through some of those work programmes as well. And that's one thing that our transport vision does, it builds on and supports the regional position, but it also puts that in the perspective of Sheffield's particularly unique challenges. So I think the work that we've done as a committee puts us in a really good place to be able to really maximise the opportunity to draw down as much money as possible from those regional sources. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Will. Do I see any other member wishes to ask a question of clarification or to, to, to make a point? I don't. Therefore, we will move to consider the recommendations, which are for approval. They're on page thirty of your agenda pack. Are we all agreed? I see no member raising dissent and lots of nods, so therefore, we... I see no member raising dissent and lots of nods, so therefore we are in agreement and will therefore approve the recommendations outlined on page 30 of your report plan pack for item eight. Thank you very much, Will, for taking us through that. Item nine relates to the experimental traffic order on Arundel Gate, in terms of the bus gate and also the Furnival Street bus gate. That is on page 43 of your agenda pack and Lisa is going to run us through it and I think also with Tom as well. I think before we do introduce the item, it's probably important just to reflect that earlier this month, members will have seen that we announced some very positive air quality data for the city about how air quality across the whole city is improving. We know that throughout the area of our Clean Air Plan, 100% of monitoring locations have seen a reduction in very harmful nitrogen dioxide emissions, which is really, really positive news. We've seen a 16% reduction in nitrogen dioxide emissions in the CAS area and a 21% in the wider city. That's really, really positive, but it also shows us that we've still got more work to do. And whilst we're meeting legal compliance in many areas of the city, we're still not within that World Health Organisation safe level in our city yet. And I think Lisa and Tom are going to talk us through this particular item, but it's important to set it in the wider context of clean air in our city.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I'd just answer that. I think the positive changes that we've seen extend to the positive changes that people and businesses across Sheffield have made. We know that before the Clean Air Zone was introduced, around 64% of the trips through the Clean Air Zone were compliant with our standards through the CAS. But following the introduction of the Clean Air Zone, they're now pushing beyond 91%. So some significant change as a result of, you know, kind of the change that people across Sheffield have made, so really positive position. Lisa's going to take us through the headlines of the report which you've all received. You'll be aware that there's quite a lot of detail in the paper, so we're going to concentrate on the headlines and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Tom. Yeah, you'll see that the report is quite substantial and I know that the committee's been well briefed on the report too, so I'll not take too much of your time. So Furnival Street is a bus gate that was installed during Covid, when Pinston Street was closed for social distancing, when businesses reopened. It was to allow buses to penetrate the area and still serve the Arundel Gate area. It was installed via emergency active travel measures, via a temporary traffic regulation order. This is to be done quickly and it has limited consultation and doesn't allow the bus gate to be made permanent. So this is why it's been included as an experimental traffic regulation order for us to conduct some statutory consultation, see if the bus gate still serves the purpose that it was installed for, and obviously allow the committee to make a decision about whether the scheme's made permanent. Moving on to Arundel Gate, Arundel Gate has been identified as one of the most polluting areas of the city, sorry, we're trying. That's understandable, given that prior to the bus gate being installed, the buses that serviced the area are quite substantial, the traffic that used the area pre-bus gate was really substantial, the conflict between buses driving in and out of the stops, traffic trying to negotiate the limited bus lane and then getting into its general use lane, the amount of businesses such as hotels, the theatres, there are two, the cinema that are on the Arundel Gate. It's not very surprising that it's a really polluted area. So we've been mandated by ministerial direction to bring the levels down, which forms part of our Clean Air Plan, which we're delivering as tiers. So we have the CASC, which is obviously the most impactful on our Clean Air Plan, we have the Arundel Gate bus gate, which operates northbound, and then we have anti-idling measures, which are installed all bus stops along the Arundel Gate, which allow our CEOs to issue fixed penalty notices for any bus driver idling their engines when they're stopped for over two minutes. Modelling has shown that only with all of these three tiers of interventions, we achieve compliance on Arundel Gate, which has been, just as alluded to, has worked in the year that the bus gate has been installed. Within the bus gate, we are now compliant, but as Ben also said, this is not the time to bring our measures backward, we've still got more work to do, it's not the time to set the foot off the gas. We've done substantial comms work with the Arundel Gate bus gate, which you will see appended to the report. We've received 13 objections to the statutory part of that consultation, which are also appended to the report with an officer response. The signings that we've done on site to try and drive down the number of contraventions has been a developing process. You'll see by a graph that's also appended to the report that we've really driven down the number of people that are abusing the bus gate, and I think that's allowed us to achieve the Clean Air Compliance as quickly as we have. And the Arundel Gate bus gate forms part of our city centre connecting Sheffield scheme that will be built next year. And the beauty of that is it allows us to make the bus gate in permanent material. So all of these big red signs that are currently out on site will be replaced by landscaping, narrow carriageway with actual city centre specification materials, so the bus gate will be far more apparent, it'll look far nicer than it currently does. We also really need this scheme as well as for its clean air benefits, for bus journey time improvements, you'll see some data about that in the report. We've also had letters of support from the bus operators and Simca, which again, an appendix to the report. And when they found out that this report was coming to the committee, they were really keen to have their say on how it really impacts their bus services in a positive way, they really wanted to make that point to you. And I think that's it. So the recommendation of the report is to retain both bus gates as is currently on site, which is 24-hour operation. And I welcome any questions.
Thank you Lisa, and thank you for putting together that really comprehensive report, it's really appreciated. I can see councillor Merzrow, councillor Sangha and councillor Horner. Councillor Merzrow.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work in putting the report together. Me and the other two city ward councillors are very supportive of the scheme being made permanent. We recognise the many benefits to residents and visitors, including obviously air quality. I would also highlight that there's better road safety as a co-benefit of this, we want fewer motor vehicles coming into the city centre, makes it safer for people on foot and bike, and it makes for a more pleasant area as well. I welcome the plans for more greening here, I think that will make a real difference. I'm aware that this is one of the darkest hotspots for collision injuries for 16 to 25-year-olds next to the Schu campus, where Harlem students are bound to cross that road, and it's a wide road. I wondered if there's scope for improvements to crossings anywhere because it is a wide road as it currently is and it intersects the Gold Route for walking and cycling, goes up from the station. I welcome the improved bus times that have happened as a result of this as well, and also the advantage that this will bring to 26% of Sheffielders who don't have access to a car. I'm also, it's really attractive to business as well, I've seen that there's an Arundel Gate mixed-use development planning application that wants to move into the area near to the O2. And they've highlighted in their application the lower traffic and more sustainable quality of Arundel Gate and wanted to set up here as a result, so it's great that it's already attracting more business to the area. Really welcome anything that helps to mode shift and reduce emissions and tackle the climate emergency, we're not on target as we are at the minute, so anything that we do do is welcome. And anything that enables more active ways of travelling to be integrated into everyday activities massively beneficial. I have some questions. Is there a reason why the southbound carriageway is still open to all traffic with permitted exceptions, when reducing the traffic here would benefit the area in the ways that have outlined for the northbound, especially with Arundel Gate being over the legal limit? It's noticeable in the report that bus operators have both commented that Arundel Gate is used for rat running. Also, I wondered if there could be more signage to the lift that goes up from Arundel Gate to St Paul's, because that would enhance the experience of some users who might not be aware that it's there, and it helps to reduce some of the upward journey that they have to make. I also noticed that the random survey of people in the area didn't include people under 16, and I'm aware that a lot of children use buses, and I wondered if future surveys could be written so as to be able to include them, because their experiences and feedback are really important. I also have a couple of suggestions and ask that the following be passed to Simca, the need to improve the bus shelters there. There isn't a shelter on the side of the road next to the O2, there's no digital signage, there's no information, lighting's not great, buses in the evenings aren't frequent or reliable, so you can come out from the night time economy and find that you're just stranded there for ages in the rain with no information about buses. I'd welcome more seating at the bus stops, it's really important that we have more seating if we're to enable people to walk more and use more public transport. And my final suggestion is that for the theatres and libraries, they include more information about sustainable ways to get there, they've got offers of parking, they don't seem to have much information about buses, trams and other ways of getting in, bike parking, etc. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Merzrow. Lisa and Tom are able to reflect on those, I think councillor Merzrow talked about, decision making about whether the council should or shouldn't also include the southbound carriageway, about signage to list on the Arundel Gate, about surveys and how under-16s can be included, about bus shelters, which I know is something that we've reflected on, and also about working with businesses to promote sustainable means of transport.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions councillor Merzrow. So in terms of why the bus gate on the Arundel Gate is a northbound only bus gate, the proposal originally was developed as part of the Transforming Cities Connecting Sheffield City Centre project, which is moving forwards towards delivery early next year. That scheme was predominantly looking at bus journey time reliability. So in terms of the movements through the city centre, that was a particular route that was identified for improvement. That's not to say that other kind of direction through the city centre for buses doesn't require improvement, but some of that is associated with bus gates that are still to come forward as part of the Connecting Sheffield scheme. So that was the original position that the bus gate was developed. Through the testing and analysis of the Clean Air Zone proposals, what was clear is that Arundel Gate, particularly around the interchange, but also just north of where the bus gate currently is, we had these significant exceedances. In testing the Clean Air Zone category C proposals, that didn't reduce air quality enough. So given that we'd already developed a proposal for a bus gate based on the bus journey time reliability, we included that in to see what the impact of that bus gate would have. And the modelling and assessment showed that it had a positive effect and it brought those levels to compliance. So in terms of government's proposals, we set out that the early delivery of that element of the Connecting Sheffield scheme would complement our Clean Air ambitions and achieve the outcome that we were all seeking. So that's why it's just a northbound bus gate. In terms of the scheme as it develops, clearly as it complements that wider change in the city centre and that change on the Arundel Gate, effectively between Charles Street and where the Gold Route crosses the Arundel Gate, that area there, you mentioned around crossings and changes, that will look significantly different in the future. Lisa mentioned some of the, kind of taking some of the carriageway space, which is really quite wide as you mentioned, providing dedicated cycle facilities, segregated cycle facilities in that space to link in from Pinston Street, from the Charter Road, improvements around the heart of the city, connecting that into the university and down towards the station. So those improvements will come forward. Lisa, do you want to touch on some of the positive work with businesses as a result of the kind of consultation and engagement and information?
Yeah, definitely. I'd touch on a few more comments as well. I know that you mentioned benches as well previously, which we're taking away to see if TCF can cover that and also the lift signing, I've made a note of that. The under-16 survey is a really good point, we did it while school was in play, and you rightly say that children under 16 use public transport, rely on public transport, they are one of the groups that we identified as being positively affected by this scheme. So it is probably an oversight to not really target, you know, we've just got the surveyors in the city centre during a normal day, you know, get as many people as you can, people are shopping, commuters. So absolutely, the next time we do something like this, really good point, thank you. The library is a really good point as well, so I'm ready, my point to work with the library and the website to make sure that the bus gate was on their site, so if anybody wanted to come into the city centre to go to the library, knew about the bus gate, that needs to be complemented with other ways to get there. So I'll absolutely take that as a point as well and make sure that's on all the websites that we have access to. Really good news about the investment of businesses on the Arundel Gate and citing the bus gate. We did such close work with all of the businesses on the Arundel Gate, building up to its introduction, so it's really nice to know that the bus gate is having a positive effect on businesses and their coming to the city rather than negatives, so that's really good to know. So thank you for that. Anything else I missed?
I think that covered it and I can hopefully see the councillor Merzrow, are you nodding? Yes, absolutely. Thank you Lisa for that really comprehensive answer. So I've got councillor Sangha, Horner, Shaw and Campbell Pugh. Councillor Sangha.
Yes, thanks Chair, thanks for the report. And I think I do want to come back with some comments at the end, but before I get to that, just a couple of questions from reading it and also the main questions that we've had about it over these last, you know, whatever it is, year, year and a half. So I think the first question is in terms of, in terms of disabled drivers and in terms of what we see as the standard answer to the Connecting Sheffield strategy in terms of where people currently use cars because of their disability and don't feel that, don't feel that the bus service is currently or ever will be suitable for them, where we feel, what we feel is the transport solution in terms of Arundel Gate, because I noticed in the, the objections, a number of them quote disabilities. And I think the second question is just really building on the answer just given in terms of businesses and particularly, the two businesses I'm particularly thinking of are the main library and the theatres, how they've adapted to the change and what impact it is. Because I know early on, we had a number of constituents concerned about how they would get to either the main library or the theatres with this bus gate, so just noting that, I don't think there's a formal response from either of those, so how have they adapted to it and how their users adapted to this change? Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you mind if I also just go to councillor Horner as well? Councillor Horner.
Thank you Chair. Couple of questions. You're measuring nitrogen oxide, which I believe is part of the scheme, but they're not the only pollutants. And do we know what's happened to various other pollutant levels, which I believe are still very high? My second point was about, really was to follow on about reducing traffic into the city centre. Obviously I live off the A57, but it seems to me strange that Nunnery Square Park and Ride is extremely difficult to get to from the A57 because people have to go down to the roundabout and back up again. Is it not possible for Simca to consider putting a box traffic light junction on there so that traffic can turn into the park and ride rather than have to go further? Because we ought to encourage people to use the park and ride to stop them coming into the centre, because from that Nunnery Square Park and Ride, it's only a handful of stops to get to Cathedral for instance, or to people. We ought to be maximising the use of that park and ride, because that is well known that car drivers tend that car drivers tend to prefer either trams or trains as an alternative way, if you say tend to be less favourable to buses. But I do, you know, I do urge that we look at that very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Horner. I'll just ask Lisa and Tom just to reflect back on those two points from Councilor Sanga and Councilor Horner.
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, I'll take them in order. So Councilor Sanga, in terms of disabled drivers, we know that there is a desire and a need for many to be close to the city centre, some of the on-street disabled parking on Surrey Street is accessed from a Rundle Gate, clearly. A number of car parks are accessed from a Rundle Gate to, close to the theatres. We were always conscious that there would be a need to retain access, and whilst there may be different routes that people have to drive now, both disabled drivers and others to get to their destination, there is still access to all of the destinations on a Rundle Gate. And that, given that the exit from Norfolk Road, Norfolk Street, is left-only onto a Rundle Gate, it almost mirrors the route in if the access is really close to the theatre or the libraries on Surrey Street. So the access is maintained for everybody, but yes, there is a different route that a number of people have to take, albeit depending on which direction they are coming to and from. So in terms of the library and theatres, Lisa and the team have done some really good work, both before the bus gate was introduced, and following on, around information, providing support and information to all of the kind of key establishments. And I think that was very positively received by the theatres and the library in particular. And I think the information that Councilor Mersrow mentioned earlier, there is more information on there, it does highlight the presence of the bus gate, which is very useful, albeit obviously people do need to proactively look at some of that in planning their journeys. In terms of some of the questions around wider pollution issues from you, Councilor Horner, you're absolutely right. Nitrogen dioxide is one of the poisonous gases in air pollution, it's not the only one, and fine particulate matter, which is a very fine dust that you can't see with a naked eye, is the other part of air pollution. We will be publishing a full air quality report later in the summer. We know that the legal direction that we often talk about, and the reason for the CAS is the legal direction, is very solely and quite precisely on nitrogen dioxide, and that is because we're above the legal limits, and we currently aren't for the others, but the actual kind of safe limit isn't the legal limit. There is no safe limit for some of the fine particulate matter, and therefore the positive kind of progress in addressing pollution from vehicles will have a broader benefit from those other pollutants. So a fuller air quality report will be published later in the summer, and I'm sure the committee will be briefed on some of the key aspects around that. But for Clean Air Zone purposes, we do focus on NO2, and we have seen very, very significant changes in nitrogen dioxide within the city, kind of compared to all of the other trends that we have. So it's really, really positive news. In terms of park and ride, Nunnery Square often does get flagged as a bit of a concern. Its proximity to the city centre is almost a blessing and a curse, you know, coming in from the park where you do have to almost drive into the city to come back out to the park and ride, that's a challenge of its location. And I think we are aware of kind of some of the low occupancy, but we're also aware of some of the really positive kind of stories around additional park and ride sites on that route into the city, particularly coming from the M1 direction into the city centre. So, you know, the additional capacity as a result of the IKEA developments is very well-used, and there's a centertainment, there's Meadow Hall, there's plans potentially to increase the capacity at Meadow Hall. There is a tram train station stop that is currently in progress at Magna, and as part of that, there will be additional park and ride facilities. And again, at Parkgate in Rotherham, there is further park and ride facilities as well. So Nunnery in particular, it is something that is in conversation with our colleagues at SYMCA. We are looking at ways of increasing and making the tram more attractive, park and ride forms part of those conversations, and I'm sure there will be more that we'll be looking at for Nunnery Square as part of that.
Thank you, Tom. That therefore takes us to, I think, Councilor Shaw's question.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, thank you, Tom, thank you, Lisa, for your report. I have questions about the kind of the initial consultation that was carried out when the bus gate was launched, on page 52 of the pack. I mean, I presume it's a typo, it says the survey consisted of five questions and only four are listed, unless there's a question that's missing. Looking through the responses, you know, majority of people weren't aware of Arundel Gate being, you know, a pollution hotspot, and, you know, thinking that's something should be done, but then a majority saying that they were against the bus gate being bus-only. And it says bus-only and not, it says allow taxis or anything. If you look in the objections, you know, there's a number of them that say, well, what about taxis and stuff? Was that, was that question basically misleading? Could some objections have been, you know, avoided? Or was, you know, what can we do to make sure that, you know, when we do these surveys, we actually present information so that people can make a kind of informed response? Because like, looking at the survey says like, it's not really explaining the case of why there is an issue, or, you know, or showing that there is an issue there, and what a bus gate would do. So it's not really surprising that there's so many objections in that survey.
Thank you, Councilor Shaw. And can I just also go to Councilor Campbell Pugh?
Thank you, Chair. My question was about the infrastructure for when it's made permanent. I've got a feeling that we'd seen some design work, but I can't find it in the reports. I wonder if I've maybe imagined it, because you've painted such a vivid picture of how I think it's going to look much, much better. Specifically, I wanted to know about that last ditch turning point, because the, currently that service route outside the Novotel isn't really as good as it could be. Is that going to be improved when the infrastructure is made permanent?
Thank you. Lisa and Tom are able to reflect on the questions raised by Councilor Shaw and Councilor Campbell Pugh.
Yeah, Councilor Shaw, thank you for that. So with an experimental traffic order, you don't need to do any pre-consultation, but because of how impactful this scheme, you know, we thought would be, we engaged counter-context to help us with our comms, and we decided that a pre-launch should be the best thing to do, especially because this doesn't really impact frontages like some of our scheme would. It's basically people coming through the city. So I think the questions were designed to just give people a sort of sense of, do you think there's an issue in Sheffield? Do you think this is a solution? And in hindsight, after, you know, your feedback, I agree, we could have probably beefed up a little bit, be a bit more specific about what we're going to do with the authorised vehicles, taxis, a little bit more information about what the bus gate might look like. But when we're in this pre-launch, we're still working at pace to kind of figure some of those things out. Because it was an experimental order, things are, you know, put on the ground fairly quickly. We'd got the Clean Air Zone timescale to match, so yeah, absolutely, in hindsight, we could have done that slightly better. I didn't think thirteen were that many objections, considering some of the schemes I've managed in the past, but I agree, some of them might have been offset if we had have been a little bit more clear with our information upfront. So, yeah, the counter-context that took that on, maybe, you know, I should have micromanaged a little bit more to make sure that the questions would have fit in nicely with the statutory consultation. So absolutely take that feedback on board for any further experimental orders that we do.
Tom?
Thank you. I'll just come back on the point around the design of the scheme. So, yes, you're right, we focused on the kind of bus gate itself today, but as part of that Connecting Sheffield scheme, and you'll have seen probably an aligned briefing on that project, the space where the bus gate currently is, so if you're travelling northbound on a Rundle Gate, you've gone past Charles Street towards where the bus gate currently is, that area will look very different as part of the scheme. So the decision point at the moment is that you can turn left almost into St Paul's access and turn around near the Novotel, but directly in the future, directly in front of the bus gates, there will be effectively a mini roundabout. And that design is very similar to one that we already have in the city centre, albeit closer to Castle Gate. So on Blanc Street, if you've come off Park Square and you've gone past the turning to Pons Forge, and you carry on through the Greater Green area there, you'll see the transformed space. Again, our ambitions are to use that palette on a Rundle Gate, but you get to a point where there is the access to the Holiday Inn and car parks, but there is a roundabout at that location, and just beyond it, there is a bus gate. So that look and feel is what we're aiming to bring onto a Rundle Gate, those high-quality materials, landscaping where that's possible, segregated cycleways, but that decision point for drivers importantly, will be immediately in front of the bus gate, instead of it looking like a straight road at the moment, where somebody has to decide to turn off, there'll be a decision point immediately in front of the bus gate, which hopefully, whilst we've seen a positive reduction in people going through the bus gates when they shouldn't, we hope that that will further reinforce the presence of the bus gate and a decision to turn back if that is indeed what they need to do to avoid going through.
Councilor Campbell Pugh, I think you would like to ask a follow-up to that.
Yeah, just to clarify, I can see the recommendations include that works are done to make the infrastructure permanent. Are we voting today to upgrade, to make those upgrades that you've described, or is this a lesser scheme than a wider scheme will come later?
Thank you, yeah. So just to be really clear, there will be some measures just to make the current scheme permanent, but early in the new year, that's the timescale where the delivery programme for the city centre scheme will start. We're currently still working through with our contractor, Galliford Try, as to what the phasing of the delivery of the city centre scheme is, because it's quite a big area, all the way from the top of Fargate, down through Pinstone Street to the top of the Moor, and then across Charles Street to a Rundle Gate, and then along a Rundle Gate up to where the university is. So significant phasing needs to be agreed. We're all obviously sensitive to kind of managing the impact of the scheme on all of the really positive things that the city centre has going on, including the World Snooker and other things, and we need to kind of agree that phasing, and we'll brief you on that. So the period between the decision today and the scheme being made permanent, and the start of those formal works in terms of the phasing is still to be determined, but we'll bring you back a briefing as to what that will look like in its fullest sense. So yes, it may be some time until the permanent scheme I've described will be in place, but some kind of interim materials at the moment just need to kind of be confirmed as part of the permanent scheme.
Thank you, Tom. Councilor Horner?
Yes, very, Chair, it was a question I meant to ask earlier. It's a quick one. You've talked about being firm with bus drivers leaving their engines idling. What about taxis and cars generally? I mean, actually, most modern cars have stop-start systems, so there really is no excuse for people having their engines idling, and do we have any plans to make that clearer to people? Because I think, you know, that is a significant source of pollution, in that as vehicles go through various traffic lights, that people have their engines running.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that question. Yes, our approach to idling at the moment has been that we would focus that kind of key message and assigning to advise drivers at curbside to some really key sensitive locations. So whilst we would, you know, kind of not want people to idle anywhere across the city, particularly around schools, all school entrances have the signs to remind drivers not to wait with their engines on. At city centre locations like taxi ranks and bus stop locations, particularly around the gate, we have the signs as well. I think the work we need to do now, given that, you're right, a lot of vehicles, newer vehicles, have an automatic start-stop, electric vehicles, zero-emission vehicles don't obviously require that. Obviously, buses in the city centre, particularly given the Rundle Gate interchange is still one of those locations that is in exceedance, so whilst the bus gate is having a positive effect on air quality, there are other issues, particularly around the bus fleets, that we need to work closely with operators on, and, you know, they are keen to work with us to reinforce those messages to drivers. We're going to be working with them to achieve that, and provide them with additional support and materials to provide that information to their drivers, and also re-engage the kind of civil enforcement officers with a concentrated period of enforcement along a Rundle Gate. But yes, that message more broadly, in terms of waiting in a vehicle with the engine running, where it's not required, you know, in terms of an operation of that vehicle, is something that we really do need to spread that message about, and where appropriate undertake enforcement to reinforce that. And we do that at schools in certain locations. The approach is that we need to advise drivers to switch off their engines, and that is generally well-heeded, but actually in terms of the kind of widespread nature of that, we need to make sure that we are focusing on sensitive locations, but providing that message out to communities across Sheffield.
Thank you, Tom. I'm mindful that Councilor Sanga wished to make a comment, that wasn't necessarily a question. Also, I ask any other members of the committee if they wish to make a comment before we do take a decision on this item. Councilor Sanga?
Yes, thanks, Chair. I mean, I'm, thank you for the report, and very much note the response from the two bus operators, that it has been a very much a welcome intervention, and something they wouldn't want us to see go back on. So I think we have little choice other than to make this permanent, because clearly it has made improvements to the bus network and it has made improvements to Clean Air. I just want to go back through the governance failure in terms of Clean Air, and that's a governance failure at all levels, from central government down. I don't feel this is the way to tackle it. I mean, you know, back before 2010, 2011, you know, we were talking about a number of clean air breaches across the city, including the city centre, including the M1 corridor, including the heavy rail lines, and including the river valleys. And we've then redefined Clean Air as a city centre problem, when if you get the monitors out, you find lots of other spots outside the inner ring road. So I feel, I feel we lost that, I feel this obsession with just NO2, when those of us with respiratory problems find high levels of PM2.5, a much bigger problem, and also knowing that the reduction of particulates is not just going to be about moving away from internal combustion engines, that if we have heavy electric vehicles, putting rubber on to the That if we have heavy electric vehicles, putting rubber onto the atmosphere, we're going to have the same particulate problems there. So there's some fundamental challenges to the approach that our government had for the last 15 years in terms of clean air, in terms of responding to WHO and European directives. So that might be my first challenge. My second challenge was being 2018, when the government said, well, 30 UK towns and cities have been breached, it's about time you did something about it. I don't think that was a spirit of cooperation between central and local governments. And so we ended up with a situation around the time of Covid where we hadn't got a solution. We then tried to find a solution and we ended up with CASC as the least worst. The way we were going to do it was monitoring nitrogen dioxide. And we chose the ring road and it was a really difficult issue because where the ring road is in Sheffield is too close to the city centre. So lots of people, you know, the CAS has to include the ring road. And then at the final moment, when we were all struggling with the compensation packages for small goods vehicles and HGVs and the changes in terms of the fleet required in terms of taxi, of hackneyed carriages and private vehicles. We were then told the only way to get the numbers to balance was this bus gate on Arundel Gate. I just don't think that's the right way. And we ended up agreeing it because, and let's be honest, we took the view, and I can't speak to the other two groups, but we took the view that we had to work with the government, we had to find a solution to this. We had to agree something in terms of clean air to move us forward on other issues. I'm, as I say, I'm very pleased that we've seen reduction in terms of nitrogen dioxide. I'm very pleased we've seen the small van fleet modernised. Very pleased that people are actually moving to Euro 6. I'm also very pleased that there is people moving to hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles. Really good news. And clearly, this bus gate as the final thing has made a difference. And people are liking it. And as others have said, that from a pedestrian point of view, it's linking the city. I think, I just wish, in retrospect, and you can't go back, in retrospect, we could have brought the connecting Sheffield transport vision forward half a dozen years ago. And we'd had a clean air strategy that talked about all the pollutants. And we'd had a better, you know, a more constructive relationship with government. So the government didn't impose a range of solutions. But, you know, having said all that, welcome the fact that we shouldn't go backwards. And that when, in the next few months, we look again at the connecting Sheffield, that we're able to go out to the people of Sheffield with a clearer view of the interventions we're making in the city centre. Because it is a big transformation to the city centre. If it's a walking and cycling city centre, rather than a bring your car close in, that is a big change. And it does, as others have said, and it does need to be backed up with a public transport offer that can support that. And from a clean air perspective, I think it's great that we have made this progress. Although the progress is no more than we made during the Covid complete lockdown. Clearly, we don't want a lockdown as an answer. I just think when we look again at clean air and the clean air zones, we need to think about the clean air across all of Sheffield, all the places where we are in breach of pollutant levels, not just, not just within the area of the CAS, which, as I say, I think we were largely forced by external circumstances. Certainly, our group will be looking for a wider solution and a better way of taking more of the people of Sheffield with us. I think for this item, I think we've ended up with something that is good in terms of clean air and good in terms of public transport, good in terms of active transport. But I don't feel we took the people of Sheffield with us on this. So I'm not going to go back. But I do think, as we look forward to the connecting Sheffield for the new city centre transport and for clean air, we just need to find a better way of taking more people with us. And that is something about what we were talking about earlier, about a working relationship both with the mayor authority and with central government. So we don't end up with a situation that we end up doing things, doing the right thing, but without taking the public with us. So that's where I am on this. Want to move forward, move forward rather than backwards. But we should learn lessons from an issue which I don't think we've dealt with in a government perspective as good as we could have done. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Sangha for your reflections. Councillor Mizero.
Just a quick request from me. Could you reiterate to bus operators the ongoing issue with bus idling in Burngrieve? It's still happening and I'm aware that we've had residents contact us about this to raise this for at least the last four years without any resolution. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mizero. And I think I can see nods from Lisa and Tom there for that particular question. Okay, so that therefore takes us to the decision point on this particular item. It's on page 44 where the recommendations for approval are there. I'd like to ask the committee whether we are all agreed. Of course, if any member wishes to dissent, then please do raise your hand. I can see that we are in agreement and there's nodding around the room. There's no member who wishes to kind of raise their hand in dissent. So therefore, we have passed this item, item nine on our agenda. Thank you very much, Lisa and Tom, for taking us through that. And also the amazing work that Lisa's done putting together that report. That therefore brings to an end our formal business today. I appreciate that members have been invited to a policy committee remit review discovery session straight after this. And I think we might just have a brief toilet break and then recommence that particular session. So thank you.